Come on, everybody, and do the funky chicken! Come on, everybody, and do the funky chicken! Okay, my fifteen minutes are over.
Hey, Ramon. You're on, buddy. You're on now, man. Oh, we got a Spanish law. There, we got translation.
This is about the McGoldrick Amendment, so that they passed the McGoldrick Amendment. Um, it's an addition or an amendment to the living wage law that's going on right now. And Newsom's gonna be in here today. Um, so that's why we're here today. We're here. I'm just kidding. So... So we got here today, so what has happened so far today? What's happened so far today? Well, we car pulled over here from the Redstone Building, and which is at 2940 16th Street. It's a labor organizing center, amongst other things. There's artists there, too. And we drove over here to the Richmond Recreation Center, where the mayor is holding his first town hall-style forum, which would have cost the Board of Supervisors $15,000 to attend, according to state law. And the mayor knew that. Um... What else?
Anything else, Ramon?
What else? It's a town hall meeting. We're here to, um... The mayor claims he supports a living wage. He claims he supports healthcare for all and paid sick leave. And yet, he and his friends in the hotel and restaurant industry and the Golden Gate Restaurant Association continue to work against those things behind the scenes. That's a big part of the reason why we're here today. You know a little more about that than I do. I'm just working with what I've got, that's all. Go for it, go for it. So, so, so we got here today, and, um, yeah, we got here. Walking around here with the signs. It's in the Richmond district that, uh... Richmond Recreation Center. Um, I kinda wanna go inside at some point. Yeah, so what you telling what's going on and that? All right, all right. Hey, Julian Davis just got here. He's a good one to talk to. Yeah, Julian. Hey, just hold the sign, hold the sign.
Hey, how are you, sir? So you guys on the RSVP list? Julian Davis. What's going on, my friend?
Do you know Natasha?
Hey, Natasha, I'm Wade. Good to meet you. You look familiar. Have you been to, like, Ross or Math Party?
Mario? No, one day, yeah. Yeah, but I'm...
Yo, Dan, how you doing? Good. Good word. I know, right? I need about half a coffee. I got my dad from Michigan, and, uh, of course, you know... Yes. Yes. Oh, cool. Yes! Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That was when I was looking for the legal appeal if you want us back.
Christine.
Sorry?
Nothing wrong with that.
I'm just getting warmed up. There are more poles in Chicago than in Warsaw.
Well, they're doing it on weekends.
Oh, I will.
Morning!
I knew that I was...
Did you do the funky chicken? The funky chicken!
So, if you believe in what you're doing?
Come on, everybody, and do the funky chicken! Come on, everybody, get up and get chicken! Come on, everybody, and do the funky chicken! Is he, is he, is he right there?
Yes. Chicken, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that chicken. Good shit, you guys. So the chickens, check it out. Read this one, listeners. Okay, wait, take out this part. Married chicken.
Oh!
Married chicken.
That was a good one.
You got that? Is it clear?
I got it. I'm focused, clearly focused.
Check that out. You can pause that when you're playing it, and people can read it.
Yeah, that too.
Right? You know, plan. Get the chickens, get the chickens.
I got it.
Get the interview. They're interviewing right there. The latest interview, though. Go to them and then film it, too.
Absolutely.
But get her, get her what she's saying, though, too.
I think you say to anyone on YouTube right there.
Get closer so you can hear them.
Thank you.
So, my chickens. Tell you why we're here. Because we want one of our own. And... But we're particular.
Chad, do you live in San Francisco?
I live in San Francisco.
Which area is it?
In the Mission.
In the Mission, okay. Do you wanna give me your last name?
Yes, it's T-E-G.
T-E-G?
Yeah, A-W-E-F.
Looks like that? Can you stick that?
You got it.
Okay.
Smile, bud. What was your name?
Christine.
Christine.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
You get a change, you change?
Huh? Actually, I shouldn't, but thank you very much. I mean, I'm working with this San Francisco daily.
Hey, give me a chicken over here.
Yeah. Oh, perfect.
Why everyday?
Yeah. Okay. So are you, are you prepared to say something in there?
Thank you. Well, there's gonna be a couple of us here.
With me, with my chicken friend?
Exactly, exactly. The last four and a half months, you said?
Right, we've been, uh, writing, proning, emailing, and, you know, we really haven't been responding. So, uh, what we wanna do is let the mayor hear from these workers themselves. You know, but it is a phase. Which is basically a living wage. And to get, uh, the mayor to support the McGoldrick Amendment.
And that's all, that's all in this package?
And what the amendment would do is, uh, get rid of any care...
Living wage!
And their minimum wage is ten...
Living wage!
The non-profit workers at the organization...
Living wage!
Nine dollars.
Now! Living wage! Now! What do we want? When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Living wage! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Living wage! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Living wage! When do we want it? Now! Living wage! Now! Wage workers under attack, what do we do? Act up, fight back! Wage workers under attack, what do we do? Act up, fight back! Wage workers under attack, what do we do? Act up, fight back! Wage workers under attack, what do we do? Act up, fight back! Wage workers under attack, what do we do? Act up, fight back! Wage workers under attack, what do we do? Act up, fight back! Wage workers under attack, what do we do? Act up, fight back! Wage workers under attack, what do we do? Act up, fight back! Wage workers under attack, what do we do? Act up, fight back! Oh, power! We got the power! What kind of power? People power! Who's got the power? We got the power! What kind of power? People power! Who's got the power? We got the power! What kind of power? People power! Who's got the power? We got the power!
I didn't interrupt. We have a sound chronicle.
What kind of power? People power! Who's got the power? We got the power! What kind of power? People power!
Actually, I would totally wear that shirt. I would totally wear that shirt. Exactly.
No peace! No peace! Will never be defeated! Will never be defeated! Corporate greed has got to go! Yes! Let's go! Living wage! Yes! Corporatey way! No! Corporate greed has got to go!
Particularly all the panelists, but, uh, decided to take the time to be here. Let me, uh... Let me try to get everybody's attention. ...and how that we continue this effort. So when sprinklers had got all this stuff completely wet, and it was fortuitous for us, because he never would come to us. And he said, uh, the second mayor, he said...
One-on-one with homeless people during the best I can. I'm presently working with a 94-year-old woman. Um, and what people in the city don't understand by art, give the lady two bedrooms, would you please? And, of course, we got it, but...
Yeah. Friday, Friday?
Said that. Ask yourselves. Ask yourselves, what have you done for a poor person lately? The last, the top four numbers on my card, call one of them, and that person will be picked up. It is so important. Don't just walk by them, especially if they're elderly or disabled in any way.
Father Harden?
I'd like to, uh, underscore what Angela is saying, because it's extremely important when we talk about the supportive part of housing. That is what's sometimes is the biggest obstacle to the folks, is cut, going through the paperwork. As the mayor knows, we started this food stamps in a day at St. Anthony's and was blessed by the city, because, uh, you need a PhD to fill out all the paperwork. And letting it, and you start talking about SSI, it's even worse than that. And so that's the important piece, and I think that's, and I have had several discussions about that, because St. Anthony's actually has a shelter. Uh, Shelter for Women at Eighth and Mission and Transitional Housing. And, uh, I respectfully disagree with Angela that I think we do need shelter until we get enough supportive housing online. But, there's a caveat to this. It's the quality of shelter. And it's a great place, as I know the outreach team is doing and HSA is doing, it's a great place to intersect with people, to get them into permanent housing, is in the shelter system. So, here again, one last comment, and this is from my friend, Cisco background. This is all about relationships.
Yes.
It's all about relationships. And the HOT team is doing a great job going out there and establishing relationships with these people that have been promised lots of things over the last god knows how many years, and nothing happened. And so why do you think they're suspicious? Because nothing happened! And so they're not gonna just say because Goody Two Shoes is out there and Father John's in his habit, that something's gonna change. And it is changing, and it takes a long time to overcome that cynicism.
Again, another timely topic, there are a bunch of questions, absolutely appropriate questions. What the city, and this is just an example, what is the city's federal advocacy agenda, given the new congressional makeup, particularly in regard for the increased McKinney-Eventow and Section 8 housing funding? I mean, here we are, we have Nancy Pelosi from San Francisco, first Speaker of the House from California, let alone San Francisco. Uh, we have a unique and historic opportunity to advocate against the tide of federal cuts for housing, particularly at HUD and Section 8. What are we doing to make sure that we are front and center in this federal agenda to begin to end the realities of homelessness?
Mr. Mayor, you can answer that question as well as I can.
Hopefully, you can answer all of them as well as you can, Trent. I know you can.
On this issue, absolutely. Um, it is a great opportunity, um, to advocate for what we need, um, from the federal government, and also the state government, although it's not as good of an opportunity, but they've been particularly absent in our efforts to help the chronically homeless. The biggest issue that we're grappling with from the federal government is, is funding for the services and the operating...
We're counting on Fiona Maum, who just arrived, to make sure we get our fair share of prop funds. Right, and someone else to do it. And in terms of buildings on the new housing, the housing that we couldn't do that if we didn't have number of funding sources, one of which is the state money. And that money was out on secret pay assets. We would develop future projects of this nature, very much. Yeah, the city, in terms of getting to Washington. Section 8 housing, and shelters and everything in the neighborhood. Richmond's been pretty good about that. You may not know, those of you who are residents or have residences in Richmond, that there is a large amount of Section 8 housing in the Richmond district. The fact that you don't know it is exactly what it should be. Somewhere around eight, 10 years ago, it took 22 meetings, some of them rather rawness, uh, for a family shelter support to be put right on here. It was gonna disrupt the neighborhood. It was gonna lower property value. It was gonna hurt the business. Well, a week later, no one knew it was there, and you still don't know.
You get written about, don't leave, you know? Don't say things that end up, or I get written about. You know, can I just thank the Richmond district, I was born and raised for accepting, uh, the war of the world and accepting the families. I can't tell you how many times people come from neighborhoods to testify in front of the implementing council, complaining that they don't want, quote-unquote, "these people" in our neighborhood. I just can't thank you all enough. And I, I'm looking forward to coming speak in our next, uh, in our next council meeting, because that's important. First of all, on the federal level, you know, we won the House, we won the, uh, won the House, we won the Senate, now we need to win the White House to stop all the cuts in Section 8 and T-E-G. Start putting, you know, uh... I was just in Italy in December, and they were passing out flyers that said, "One battleship, one major battleship" that the American government has would feed two-thirds of the poor in the world. It was a pretty amazing statement. So we need a Democrat in the White House. Having said that, we have a really, really good friend in Philip Magano, and him, working with Mayor Newsom, have bought more federal dollars to the city and county of San Francisco in the mere three and a half years the governor's been mayor than in the prior 12 years of this city government. There is hidden homeless money. My friend, Loretta Sanchez, Congresswoman from, uh, uh, I call it Disneyland. Yeah, it was not just Orange County, and Anaheim, and, you know, county, but... She, uh, she was just made the Chair of Homeland Security Infrastructure. Homeland Security Infrastructure has a budget for homelessness. So you need to delve into each and every federal government department and find out where all of the money is for homelessness, so that we know to ask for it. And we are working on that in the departments with Trent, and also on the state level. So, um, those hidden parts of money can also come to San Francisco. And that's very important. And Loretta Sanchez is definitely going to be helping us out compared to your future.
So, the reason I gave financial a little bit more time on the relationship with Philip Magano is that it's been that successful. And we've had remarkable capacity and ability, in spite of the Republican Congress, to advocate for federal funds and to actually get a disproportionate amount of those federal dollars in for our efforts on homelessness. The reason why is its evidence-based, their funding. And the fact is, particularly, our direct access to housing program, which philosophy is simple, is continuum care, we talked about, is important, but oftentimes your continuum care manages a problem as opposed to solving a problem. Direct access to housing is about getting someone out of sidewalks, off the streets, and into housing to stabilize them, and then coordinating wraparound services, supportive services, to deal with the underlying reason a person became homeless. In the first place, we had behavioral health issues, drug or alcohol issues, issues of vocational deficiencies or visiting needs. And that program is being replicated across the country as a best practice from the city and county of San Francisco. And money is being funded accordingly. So it's something you should all be very proud of, that is of the inspiration and advocacy of people like yourselves in San Francisco in relation to this effort. I also have been, and I'm very proud of this, to be the head of the Homeless Task Force in the U.S. Conference of Bears. So we're coordinating strategies for bears across the country in terms of our federal advocacy to deal with the cuts, not only in Section 8, the cuts with community development, block brands, and other investments into poverty eradication. But we're also working very aggressively, trying to stave off these cuts to HO6, and the devastating cuts we've seen in our housing, including the capital projects. And we're trying to get creatives to do that at the same time, to translate that we don't wanna just advocate responsibility and point the finger, but we're coming up with our own, what we call HO6, a strategy in San Francisco to re-mail our housing nobody sites. Our sesh, that legacy of 1,726 people that were receiving cash assistance and who were not housed are now housed because of that initiative. But that's for single adults, receiving a growing number of families in the city, the state, the major that need support. What are we doing to address the issue of families? And are families part of the 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness?
From my side, they originally were not. They are in the plan, um, and they are discussed in detail with the plan, because we've had so many, we spoke to overnight limited agencies and individuals, and we did so much research on families, along with a professor in, uh, in Philadelphia, who's Dennis Camhahn, who did an unbelievable, uh, report on this issue. Now that we have indeed, though, housed over 200 chronically homeless, as I said earlier, we are now going into the, um, family issues, especially those that are primarily homeless. Chronically homeless families are very, very different than chronically homeless individuals in that you can be chronically homeless and go from house to couch to couch to couch to couch. That's what a lot of families do. Those on the street, those who are actually sleeping on the street, we need absolutely attentive...
But that is a true, and it's novel, it's a challenge. I mean, it's a challenge for anyone in this room, driven by your house in San Francisco. I live in East Bay.
You didn't wanna admit that, everything was going so well.
I visit here a lot, most of my time.
I know, I know. This is interesting, I got a series of questions, and they're, and I think you'll understand, the duality of them. Why is the city so reluctant to enforce laws against the rest of Panhandle? Public resources, plenty shallow. And then, next question is, uh, this is what the niceties says, uh, "There's a sharp increase in the criminalization of citations for aggressive panhandling and homeless people over the last year. Don't you think the issues of these citations, uh, to law enforcement is a waste of city funds?" So, on one hand, you're not doing enough. On the other hand, how dare you? You're criminalizing poverty. The tentacles are, you're here, and, you know, you're one of the big bad guys with a badge that actually is involved with outreach for homeless, except you're one of the good guys, that's incredibly compassionate, that's now heading our efforts to address this issue in a sensitive manner, because the intent, to answer the question, is we're not trying to criminalize folks. We're not trying to throw people to jail that are poor. We're doing the things that poor people are forced to do, but they don't have the dignity of a key lock in the door in a house. That being said...
That being said, you've got to be responsible. And you can't abuse, you can't flaunt, and you can't hinder. And in that context, we're trying to find some balance. I called you many times today and we tried to address each of those incidences, the uniqueness of the situation. What is your approach, what is your team's approach? And how do you respond to excessive criminalization of citations? Do you feel that you are engaged in a disproportionate effort to criminalize those around the streets?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And really, it's a new day in San Francisco. The police department's approach to daily with quality life crimes has had a very narrow focus more than two years ago. And the police saw their role as just enforcing the law and that's about it. We know that just enforcing the law doesn't solve homelessness and putting people in jail doesn't solve homelessness either. And so two years ago, we started Operation Outreach and it's really a new focus the police department has on dealing with quality life. Yes, we do enforce the law because we are a police officer, but there's more to it. And really, the evidence is, is I'm sitting with my friends today from Public Health and Human Services and the police department has the best relationship that I could ever remember with Human Services and Public Health as partners to deal with the issue of homelessness. So in addition to enforcing the law, our officers have a homeless resource sheet that they're passing out. Our officers are dragging people down to the treatment access program, getting them methadone, getting them into treatment. Our officers are in constant contact with the homeless outreach team and our officers are getting people into housing and into services. We're doing things different in San Francisco. And as Trent had alluded to earlier, yes, we need to deal with the issues of citations. And the citation shouldn't be for criminalization. The citation should be so that the courts see that this is a problem, that the courts offer services to people. And so we have been very successful in programs called Operation Outreach. And there are officers all throughout the city that focus on this issue. Thank you.
One of the things we're doing, the court, working with the public defender, the district attorney, working with the courts, is we're looking to create a new community court that really focuses on this issue in a very different way than we focused on in the past. You know, you have this, you've got citations and you've got advocacy groups that just wait for all the citations to come in and then they throw all the citations out. And that may feel good for some people, but it hasn't solved the problem because the folks are out there again and they're being cited again and again and again and again and they're not getting the help that they need. So the question is, do we want to help them ultimately get off the street? Or are we just going to help them avoid the sanctions associated with some of their activities? Now, I don't want to see the sanctions, I want to see people get off the street, but there's got to be a way of doing that. And yes, oftentimes unless there's a stick, there's only carrots and people aren't going to change behavior. I hate to admit that, but there's just some folks who will continue to do what they've done until there's a sanction, until there's a real reason to stop. And so we're trying to balance those two ideologies. And we have been looking at best practices across the country. We just got back from one of them back east and we're going to try to adopt it in a San Francisco-centric way. Because we're just dealing pragmatically, some people just can't sober up, but why should they be forced to live out on the streets? So we're trying to get ahead, but the deal is, once you get in, you have to agree to case management. So we'll eventually break that cycle, the goal is alternate, I think Trent was, is 62 units?
62 units, yeah.
62 units for this program as well. So, okay, this is another program we're trying to include. Another question, and that has come up, is about 39 felts. Interesting, I don't know, didn't, I love the fact you guys know about 39 felts. And there were three questions about it, saying, "You're shutting it down, Trent." Or I'm shutting it down, but I'm going to throw this back on you because there's a lot of misinformation about it. I'm happy to answer the question, but Trent, why don't you give us an update on 39 felts? What it is and what we're going to be doing with it? And why do you think this is actually a good thing? And this is a drop-in center that is highly utilized and favored by the mayor.
39 felts is both a drop-in center and it's also the city's sobering center, which is a diversion for individuals who are debriefed. Instead of going to the emergency room, they go to the sobering center, which is a much lower cost to the city than the emergency room. But it's also a drop-in center and that's the portion that we are closing, but relooking...
Dollars, you're now housing Paul. And everyone said, "Well, that's outrageous, why does Paul deserve $33,000 housing? I barely make my ends meet, I've got to pay the bills and you're not giving me nothing." Well, we're saving you, I would argue, close to a billion dollars a year because of that wise investment. By the way, Paul is doing great because now he has board and care home and real housing. So goes the philosophy that we're trying to achieve on the issue of homelessness. And that is a, every two years now, Trent? Every two years we go out and we are going to be doing a citywide homeless county. So we're not dealing anecdotally with how many homeless we quote-unquote believe there are in San Francisco. This homeless county is going to occur 7:00 PM till midnight on January... Get us the information, all that. If you don't know where you are, hang on, we'll figure out when you...
And these are real people and I think that's the best way that you can learn involuntarily.